I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi. Councilmember Seaman.
President.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
All right, let's see. Tonight's agenda, there's no changes. Looking ahead, tomorrow evening on Thursday, March 16th, the council will vote to convene in a closed session. We're scheduled to consult and receive legal advice and discuss litigation related to Windin' Hill Way and the Washington McLaughlin property. The session will be closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland, general provisions, Article 3-305, B7 and 8. The council will not convene in a public session after our closed session.
Oh.
Then on Wednesday, March 22nd, we have, we will convene again in an administrative function session at 6:00 PM. This will be to receive emergency preparedness training. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public. We will then come here to have our open meeting that starts at 7:30. At 7:30, we'll have a presentation from the Village of Tacoma Park and the Safe Roadways Committee annual report and traffic calming recommendations. In addition, next Wednesday, we have two items in our voting session. Oh, it's bad, Rosie isn't here to hear this. We will have the Single Reading Ordinance authorizing Sligo Mill Overlook Playground installation and the Single Reading Ordinance authorizing purchase of play equipment for Sligo Mill Overlook Playground. Do we get to have pictures of what it's going to look like? All right. It's been a long time coming. All right, our work sessions next Wednesday night, we'll have a work session on the subdivision application for the property on the northeast quadrant of Ethan Allen Avenue and Jackson Avenue, and an update on the library renovation. Then, the next Wednesday, we will not meet because it is the fifth Wednesday of the month, so we will not have a council meeting. But we will come back on Wednesday, April 5th, at 7:30, and we'll start with a public hearing on our charter amendment regarding election date change. And we will have a presentation of the city manager's proposed FY 2018 budget. On Thursday, April 6th, we will have an open house on the budget. This is new for this year. It will be here in the azalea room from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come, ask questions, hear a little bit more about the budget. So that is on Thursday, April 6th. And then on Wednesday, April 12th, the city council will meet here at 7:30. We will have a public hearing on the city manager's proposed FY 2018 budget. Our voting session will include the first reading election charter amendment resolution, and then a resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees. Intensively, we have a work session with, regarding the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study. And then we will meet again on Monday, April 17th, for a budget work session. So I would ask my colleagues to please look at their April calendars because there are a number of Mondays that we are meeting for budget work sessions. All right, so that's our upcoming agenda items. Now this evening, we have, let's see, our first voting item is the Single Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for the HVAC system in the community center and auditorium. And then we have a consent agenda with appointments to the Board of Elections and Safe Roadways Committee. We will first take public comments on voting items. Does anyone have a public comment on the ordinance, the Single Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for the HVAC system here? No? Any public comments on the consent agenda? All right, then we'll open it up to public comments on other items. So if you'd like to give a comment, please come, state your name and where you live, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Allison Piazza. I live in Ward 2 and served for two years as the president of the PTA at Tacoma Park Elementary School, and am now the executive secretary. Last month, Montgomery County Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Jack Smith requested $750,000 in capital budget amendment for fiscal year 18 to launch an outdoor play space maintenance project. You'll find details in your packet tonight. Until now, funding to maintain MCPS outdoor areas has not been included in either its capital or operating budgets. The play space project would create a much-needed countywide system for assessing and maintaining school fields, as well as provide for immediate remediation of MCPS's most unusable play spaces, including our school's field. Furthermore, the request endorses a flexible case-by-case scenario to field management that takes into account schools' different needs and site limitations. The TPS PTA strongly supports this project as an important first step to ensuring all students have consistent access to outdoor play space, and we testified to that at the March 9th Board of Education meeting. TPS has one of the smallest total play spaces in MCPS, yet our, yet our play field is bare, cracked, compacted, rotting, and often unusable, despite being re-sotted twice since 2010. Drainage problems create frequent lengthy field closures and inhibit grass growth. Construction debris, including bricks, concrete, and metal routinely emerges on the surface. After the TPS field was re-sotted in 2014, our PTA stepped into the void left by MCPS's mowing-only management practice and maintained the field until this past fall. During that time, we dedicated an estimated $4,500 and 300 volunteer hours to routine maintenance. We learned through our work that our field's conditions are directly affected by heavy foot traffic due to overcrowding. The 2010 addition doubled our indoor space and nearly doubled our student capacity, but cut our outdoor play space in more, by more than half. Despite the 2010, 2010 addition, TPS has exceeded its newly increased capacity levels since 2013. Field maintenance became a time-consuming, expensive, and ultimately unsustainable challenge. I'm going to pass this off to another volunteer, Amy Vida.
Thanks.
My name is Amy Vida. I live in Ward 2 and have been a TPS PTA volunteer for the past five years. Overcrowding and a frequently closed field combined to create very direct effects on whether TPS students receive the full benefits of recess. We have surveyed play spaces at a number of MCPS schools and learned that TPS starts at a disadvantage because its total play space, including field, blacktop, and playgrounds, is smaller even than many schools' non-grass play space. With 20,000 total square feet of play space, our students are far more crowded than students at other schools, where total play space measures at least 30,000 square feet and often more than 50,000 square feet. Also, TPS students on average have far less space per child during recess. When our field is open, play space per child is approximately 89 square feet per child. When our field is closed, that space goes down to 49 square feet, the same area as a king-size mattress, and is well below state and national recommendations of 75 square feet per child. Other MCPS schools have play spaces providing upwards of 200 square feet per child. This issue is not limited to TPS. Other schools serving Tacoma Park residents, including Rolling Terrace and Sligo Creek Elementarys, are also affected by overcrowding in small spaces, and their PTAs have joined us in support of this project. Lastly, our play field is an important public space located in the heart of Tacoma Park and adjacent to several other heavily-used public facilities. Access to safe play spaces, and especially the shared use of public school facilities, is vital to an active and healthy community. We ask you to vote for the proposed resolution supporting the outdoor play space maintenance project before March 30th, the date the Board of Education votes on that amendment. If the Board approves the project, we expect the full county council to consider it in April. Thank you for your support of the children and families of Tacoma Park and of students across Montgomery County.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hello, I'm Susan Alexander. I live on Tacoma Avenue. I'm here to talk about the upcoming public meetings that are about the Montgomery College, Tacoma Park campus, and the community. We have been, we've started to get these postcards from the college. This came on last Friday. And so, going into these meetings, we wanted to try to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page, if that's possible. I was here a few weeks ago to talk about the scatter garden, and, and that evening, our city manager mentioned that the consultation with the college was going to begin on March 21st. I have to say, alarm bells went off in my mind a little bit when I heard the word consultation used to refer to the public meetings. At this point, you know, we do have a problem in that the college has a plan that the neighborhood is, has major issues with because of the lack of consultation. So going into the public meetings, what we're looking for at this point is a solution-finding process that will result in something that will satisfy the college's facilities' problems, but also will preserve the residential character of our neighborhood. We, we think it's highly doubtful that large public meetings will yield such a solution, and, you know, it has been our recommendation that some kind of small working group be formed. If it could be formed in parallel with the, with the meetings, that would be wonderful. But certainly, we would expect that that would be an outcome of the meetings, and the neighborhood will be using the meetings, to the extent that we can be at them, to surface the issues that we think will need to be addressed in a, in a solution-finding process. And then, what we're hoping is that, at the end of the meetings, that we'll be able to sit down, roll up our sleeves, and come up with something that the parties can, you know, both live with. So, some others have things to say, too.
I'm Lorraine Pierceall, Vice President of Historic Tacoma, and I just want to tag on what Susan said. I think, I see a working group as a very important thing to have. A working group of near-in neighbors, I think, is imperative. We have some precedent in working this way with the college in the past and actually finding solutions. So people who live right by what is being proposed, I think, have extreme motivation in finding a way to make things work. And I, I want to really stress how important it is that the near-in neighbors are part of a working group. You know, this kind of thing is very important. Back when Washington Adventist University was proposing changes to its campus, the near-in neighbors there gathered together with the help and support of the city to work together to find a solution. And I think that that is indeed the way to go. What I would not want to see is some big, broad, dilute kind of committee. I want to see a committee that is really going to roll its sleeves up and work to find a solution. We're not interested in just having discussions unless it's paired with finding solutions to what has been proposed so far, and we're optimistic that we can do that. And as I said, we have a good history in working with the college in that regard. So I'm going to remain optimistic going into the first meeting, and we'll see where that goes. Thank you.
My name's Bernie Aaron, sitting over on Tacoma Avenue, and I'm part of this group. I'm not sure everybody in the city council is even aware of what the issue is with the college, but they've been well along the way in planning the largest building they've ever built, 135,000 square feet, right on the corner of Tacoma and Fenton, bigger than the Nunley Building. But the point that Lorraine and Susan made is the key point, which is, I've lived across from the college for 35 years. We've tried to get along, we've had our ups and downs, nobody wants to fight, but this is going to affect the residential character of our neighborhood, and there needs to be a process where everybody has a chance to be a part of the decision, not just an announcement of somebody else's plans that were made over a period of years that the community never had a chance to have any input in. So I think it's a hopeful step that the college is coming here. I applaud the city council and the mayor for helping make that happen, and Peter Kovar, councilman. But I think the notion of a working group is the key to this because you can't settle complicated, ongoing, costly issues, you know, in a public forum that only meets in public. At some point, people have to sit around a table with facts and figures and, and respect, and try to work out a decision that takes into account all the stakeholders' legitimate interests, and that's what we're seeking. So thanks.
Okay. Any other public comments this evening?
Ken Flemmer, the Director of Adventist Community Service Center over on Sligo Avenue, just outside of Tacoma Park. It isn't approved, but we're glad to see Piney Branch Pool funding in the county's budget without even sneezing this year, it seems. It was a whole lot easier than a couple of years ago. The computer repair class that the city has put some money, it's been a little slow in recruiting, but we have the first students that will be ready to start hopefully next Wednesday. If not, it'll be the Wednesday after that. So that's been a little slow in getting started, but it's moving along. And the reason I'm here tonight is that I just wanted to, well, I had needed to meet someone to sign a memo of understanding between Adventist Community Services and the Tacoma Park Welcoming Group for Syrian Families. And in view of your resolution that you'll be looking at in a week or two, we've been collaborating without the MOU, but we finally got it signed tonight. So I want to thank the city and the residents of Tacoma Park that are concerned about those that are struggling to find a new future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just want to follow up, if it's appropriate, could you share a copy of the MOU?
Sure. I'll get it over here, okay?
Thanks.
All right. So for some reason, the microphone system, I've gotten an application error. I just restarted, so not sure what that means. But hopefully, we'll figure that out soon. All right, any other public comments? Go ahead, Ms. Metchewee.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thank you, council, mayor, city administrator, Jessie, other people, Mary Jane Metchewee, Ward 2. I'm trying to get everything jelled together in my brain. Of course, you all know, one of my main things is Parents of Special Needs Adults Founder, and I'd like to have more time to devote to that, but unfortunately, I have to, going to have to spend a lot of my time mowing my lawn and, and in front of the sidewalks and maintaining things while the people down the street just plant trees and don't have to do anything. And I just don't think it's fair. I'd rather be doing help with Parents of Special Needs Adults, including my son, rather than mowing this thing. But the people down the street, there's no, evidently, I would like to, and also the letter carriers, they should have the right-of-way to walk on this land. I don't see why these people can't have at least that wide a place for letter carriers and people. I've had a 15-year-old girl used to walk my dog, chase down the street with a knife, and she had to cross the other side of the street. Why should she have to go into traffic? Why can't these, everybody be, I consider decent, have, have that much in front, in front of their house so people can walk anyways? And also, I'm concerned about gentrification in my neighborhood, and there's a lot of that going on, people buying smaller houses and turning them, make them twice as big, and charging $500,000, $600,000. And I like the mixture, I like the racial mixture, that's why I moved there. And we couldn't only afford it then, it was 32 years ago, it was $69,000 for a two-bedroom house. And I'd like to see more people be able to afford to live in my neighborhood, you know? I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I mean, you know, wealthy people are okay, but I like the mixture, you know? I just feel like I was in a party and the two parents were talking about, oh, my kid, I have three kids, and two of them went to Harvard, but I'm, my other kid, oh, well, we had a problem, he can only go to the University of Maryland. And I just felt like, you know, I have only one son, and he's got special needs, and I felt that I didn't belong. I felt, I almost cried. I had to leave the room. And, you know, it's great that you go to Harvard, and people go to Harvard, but I'd like to see other people, too. And thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, we will now turn to council comments. And I can't see anything, so, and I don't know if your microphones are going to work. Councilmember Kovar, why don't we try starting with you?
I think it's working, right?
Yes, yep, it's working.
A few quick things. First of all, I was just wondering about the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center letter and what the status of that is, and maybe, I know it's supposed to go out maybe this week, do we know if that's still happening? I've gotten a number of questions from residents. Okay. And similar for, on the cloud burst strategic plan, I think I was a first- or second-tier stakeholder, but I, I'm not sure whether that means I get contacted early or late, but I haven't been contacted yet to talk, so I'm just curious. I did have the opportunity on Monday to testify in Annapolis on behalf of the legislation, the bond legislation for the library. It was $150,000, that's just a small piece of the overall cost, but it would be nice to have the state informator through this. And so, the support from Will Smith and Sheila Hickson, who are the two who introduced the bills, and Ellen Arnold Robbins, the director of the library, joined me there and actually answered a couple of technical questions that I was ill-equipped to answer, so we had a chance to do that, and hopefully, that process will go forward and we'll get that money. One other thing, I just did want to thank the residents still lurking there who spoke about the Montgomery College sessions that are coming up. And it's a really important set of meetings. The first one is Tuesday, March 21st, here at 7:30. And the, yes, the postcard was sent by the, by the college, but it's a joint set of meetings sponsored equally by us and by the college, and there's, there's a neutral facilitator, and we're contributing money to that. So this is not a college event, it's not a city event, it's a joint event between the two of us, and I think that's really important. I agree with, with the idea that was presented by the, the three speakers, that in the end, it will require a smaller group to really do the kind of rolling up the sleeves work that they're talking about. I think, though, that the initial meetings, which will help lay out the, the larger sets of issues, will be important to set the stage before. What I'd like to see is getting to those smaller meetings, and I hope we'll get there. Right now, we know we have these three meetings. I really want to encourage everybody to come, and I do think that this is the beginning of a process that will be results-focused. So yes, it's an opportunity to get information, to ask questions, to provide feedback, but that's not all it is. I view it as an opportunity to get somewhere in the end, and so I appreciate the, having folks from the ward speak up on that. And I appreciate the support from the mayor and the city staff and my colleagues on, on some of the letters that we've done to get us to this point. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just going to go down the road. Councilmember Smith, do you have anything?
Yes.
This evening? All right. Press, you can press your button.
All right, sure. Thank you, mayor. First, I would like to say that a couple of my colleagues in the council joined me at the National League of Cities District of Columbia conference. It was excellent, always get an opportunity to learn new things that are going on in the country. And later, earlier today, I had a chance to advocate on Capitol Hill for the National League of Cities priorities. So I talked to Senator Cardenstaff, excuse me, Congressman Raskin, and Senator Van Hollen. All three of them are supporting two priorities that the National League of Cities has. One is to maintain taxes exempt status for municipal bonds, and the other is to close the online tax loophole. For those that don't know, the states lose 21, $23 billion a year from uncollected online taxes. So it was a number of great meetings, and the members on the Hill were very receptive. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mail?
Thank you. And the residents who came earlier tonight to speak about the school and the outside space, my colleagues have a copy of a draft resolution that they provided to us, and it's very much my hope that we could, we could support that. One of the graphics that they gave to us, I think, is extremely compelling, and I'm going to try to get an electronic copy of that, showing that the space, the play space for kids in Tacoma Park Elementary School during the parts of the year when this playground's closed is a per-student space the size of a king-size bed, whereas a, you know, a Bethesda-area elementary school has a place that is 10 times bigger. Is one of the most stark and memorable graphics that I've seen in a while. It looks at inequity in the county distribution of resources and space between, you know, one part of the county and another. Down-county consortium issues are not just in the classroom, they're in the entire physical space. So I hope we can act in that. And my sense is that, you know, that there's momentum behind it already, so I don't think we're asking, we're going up too steep of the hill. I wanted to speak tonight because this is my first council meeting after leaving work at the White House for two and a half years, which is great, so I can finally speak my mind.
Hey, we don't have all, they don't have much time tonight.
How much time do we have?
I figured it out. I went back over the last two years, and I figured out that Councilmember Schultz has spoken for six hours more than me. So I'm going to start, start making up that difference.
You start right now?
Starting tonight.
I'm anxious to hear what you really think.
But, but seriously, my thanks to my colleagues and city staff for the occasional issues on which I've had to recuse myself, and to constituents for whom most of the issues that we worked on, I've been able to champion or work on, but occasionally, I've not been able to pursue things that constituents have been interested in because they are connected to national politics, either in the previous administration or the last 50 days under this one. So just identifying a few priorities for me over the next few months, my own version of a rolling agenda. Councilmember Smith and I came out of the, the meeting he just referred to, charged up about the youth councils, we've all talked about that, and it'd be great to just, just try to move forward and, and get that youth council going. I think we've all spoken encouragingly about it.
Mr. Garen's doing it.
Awesome. So I'd love to see us, like, actually get the point of having student applicants soon. I'll be pushing for a budget that doesn't include higher taxes. The tax rate is one of the single ways that we have the biggest influence on whether housing in our community is affordable or not. A couple hundred dollars difference in one year doesn't make a difference, but it adds up to thousands of dollars of difference over five or 10 years, and has a, a big effect on the affordability of staying in Tacoma Park for residents, particularly residents who are in the middle, residents on a fixed income or otherwise, you know, struggle, but can own a house or would like to be able to own a house. Those are the people that we're making it harder to stay if we keep raising taxes. And I think there's ways we can continue to provide the awesome services that we do without, without doing that. One of the issues that I haven't been able to focus on is the pesticide law, because I worked at the Council on Environmental Quality. Residents have asked for amendments to our, to our pesticide law, our law that prevents the application of pesticides on lawns, in particular, adding neonicotinoids, a class of pesticides that's been closely linked to massive bee deaths, honeybee deaths across the country. And it would be a very small action to just tweak the law and just add, you know, a couple of words really to the, to the statute, so I'd like to pursue that. We're moving forward on the charter changes, and a discussion about charter changes with the public associated with syncing up our elections, and I can't wait to be part of that set of public meetings and, and process with council going forward. And then lastly, just let me say that it's not just the issues that we work on and the budget that we work on, but it's the principles that we pursue. And so at a time in a place that is a neighborhood of Washington DC, when we have a national administration that so often is avoiding, running from, or hiding the truth, or in the case of the president, lying about it every day, we, as a council and a city government, have a responsibility to do better, to do far better really than we even normally do, to engage our residents, to be forthright and truthful with our residents, to champion government services and government employees, city employees and others, at a time when it's tough to, to work for government, and to try to do our best to build or to maintain faith in the ability of government in a democracy, an elective democracy, to provide the things that people want, to listen to our residents regardless of whether we can always meet their needs, but to be clear, when we can and when we can't meet their needs, why are we able to take action, why we're not able to take action. And that's always been part of this job, but for us as a city council, working together as we always have done, I think it's even more of a, of a burden now, so that we don't really get pulled down at the same time that people are losing faith in the, in the country's leadership to be able to support. leadership to be able to support what they need, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, do you have anything to say?
Oh, never mind, I was just kidding.
All right, councilmember Schultz?
Really? Oh, okay. Can I have some of your time? Because I need to keep up with him. I spent Monday and Tuesday at the same conference, and I feel like I've sort of been like, you've heard the phrase, drinking from a fire hose, because it was so intense in terms of meeting, hearing ideas of what's going on, mind you, 2,000 people come from across the United States who are town, who are municipal people like us, and you realize that there are so many different, so much innovation going on, that it's just a wealth of knowledge, and by the time the day was over, I mean, I filled up pages of notes. Wanted to just to mention a few of those, and one of the things that struck me from the very first minute was the presence of teenagers at this conference, because throughout the program, every day, which is a five-day program, they had youth collaboration work, and we heard some of those, some of those young people talk, and I came away feeling like we are really missing the boat here so far in not having set up something equivalent at our local level in terms of having a committee of youth on youth. And I've mentioned this before, and, but I think when we lowered the voting age to 16, it made it paramount that we get into this, so that we're not just giving young people the token opportunity to vote, but to actually have some influence on our decision-making, and so that it would become a regular established committee, and I think my colleagues are already on, pretty much all of us are on board with that, and we don't have to do any, make a big deal out of it, we can just do it. Nicole Wallace, who is a Republican commentator, frequently seen on MSNBC, gave a wonderful keynote address that was pretty sarcastic and down-to-earth about our current president, whose name shall not be spoken, but she, she reminded us of two things, and that is just not to pay any attention to the damn tweets, which are vacuous, as we all know, but to pay attention to what it was that caused the people to want to, to leave the Democratic column and vote Republican throughout the United States and figure that out, and that when we talk to our representatives in Congress, to tell them as council members, the people trust us a lot more than they trust you in Congress, so listen to us, because we have stuff that you need to hear. And those are two things that kind of like, said, oh my gosh, that's so obvious, why didn't I think of that? But we also heard some fascinating ideas, racial equity seemed to be a theme that ran through the whole thing. In Philadelphia, the police department there has established something they call a footbeat operation, which puts young academy graduates on the street, literally on their feet, on the beat, because they are idealistic, full of energy, and are learning what true community policing is all about. And this, this has been done in high-density areas, and they've seen a 40% reduction in crime where they have these footbeat operations, and what, another program that they've done, I'm sorry, 20% reduction is to, since most of the crime gets done by the same 2% or 3% of the, of the people in the community, is for the police to stay in close touch with those individuals on a weekly basis, to call on them, to see them in the street, to chat it up with them, and where they have been able to do that, they've scientifically measured a 40% drop in, in repeat crime. And when you hear something like that, you sort of say, well, that's not real high technology, that's just sort of something that seems to make, make sense. We learned about something called FirstNet, which is a new system of wireless communication that supplants the cellular system for police officers. Right now, police officers have their mobile radios in their vehicles, and they have their own personal cell phones, but when you're in a large crowd, like at the Women's March or a baseball game or something like that, no one has cell service, but this is a new system that's being introduced across the United States called FirstNet, that basically allows the police to have their own internet, their own cells, cellular system, and it allows them to deal with all kinds of problems and these kinds of situations that otherwise they would not be able to sustain communications. We learned a little bit about some, some towns who are installing their own fiber-optic network systems rather than waiting for the big companies to do it, others that are installing their own underground conduit systems called DIG-ONCE, so once you put the conduit in the ground and the city owns it, then the fiber optics can follow years later, or stuff like that. We learned about cities that have, that own their own broadband systems, and then that way they can make sure that absolutely every household in the community has it, including the most, the most impoverished of households have access to actual broadband and are not just reliant on smartphones. We heard an interesting conversation from a representative of Uber, who talked about an enormous range of pilots that they're working on, one of which is they've been talked, they've been talking to MedStar, which is the big hospital chain in the Maryland-Virginia district area, that they say they lose billions of dollars a year, and this is a national figure, not just the local figure, in income because of missed appointments. People can't get to the appointments or they, you know, for one reason or another, but what MedStar's doing is hiring Uber to go and pick up the patients and make sure that they get brought to the hospital or the clinics that they need, and so it's kind of like this attention on the last mile. Sure, we can get these large light rail and, and heavy rail systems and complicated bus routes, but if the individuals who need to get there can't find their way, and they live in a transportation desert, then an organization like Uber, the shared ride service, allows people to be able to get places. I could go on and on and on, and I don't want to do that out of a courtesy to my, my colleagues here, but it was just to give you an idea of what, what the, what was coming out of the fire hose, a lot of ideas, and I, I think it would be great if some, you know, next, next year, because this conference occurs every year about this time in the District of Columbia, because it's targeted towards Congress, that residents think about attending these, these things, or part, parts of it, might be something we could think about doing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. A couple of things tonight, can the city clerk please add to our agenda for next Wednesday, on March 22nd, the resolution that was presented this evening by the TPS parents, so that council can consider it? Councilmembers, just to remind you, you have a copy of it in your folder, and then we can get that posted for next week. The county executive put out his budget this week. Some good news, as we heard, for Piney Branch Pool, but some not-so-good news. The request that we made in the fall for a paramedic at our fire station was not included in the budget, I'd asked that the city manager please send the resolution and a letter to our county council to remind them that we had put this request in, in particular to our county council member, Mark Elrich. In addition, as many, as we've talked about, we've been working with our partners here in the city to request a feasibility study done at Washington Adventist Hospital when they move, so that we are not left with empty buildings and an empty campus. That request was not in the budget this year either, and so we can discuss as council with our partners at Washington Adventist Hospital, Montgomery College, and Washington Adventist University, how we would like to proceed and reach out to our county council members to see if they will put it in the budget for this year. So, some good news and not so great news on the county executive's budget specifically for Tacoma Park.
What is good news again?
Piney Branch Elementary School pool.
Oh, okay.
So, that was the good news. What else do we have? I just want to say thank you to our police department and our recreation department and other members of our council who were able to attend a forum here for, mainly for the schools in our area, our principals and teachers, on immigration issues, particularly the recent executive orders put out by the president. Liz Keys, who is a parent here in Tacoma Park, and she is a lawyer at the University of Baltimore School of Law, did an excellent, excellent presentation. I've seen a lot of presentations lately on these issues, and I have to say, I think this was one of the best. We did record it, and it should be up soon on city TV, so others can see it, so it was a, it was a very, very well-attended event, and I want to just thank, again, the rec department, city TV, and our police department, in particular Captain Collington, for putting that together. We had the Tacoma Junction redevelopment meetings, I was able to go to three of the four meetings, they were very well-attended. I'd ask that we look at a, an agenda coming up soon and extend an invitation to maybe members of the resident committee and city staff to do an update on where we are in the process coming up soon. And then finally, as councilmember Schultz remarked at the National League of Cities, there was, I know, a lot of discussion of racial equity, this is an issue that we've been discussing as a city council since our retreat in January, and beginning April 5th, when we have the city manager present her budget, we will begin on our agenda packets to have a statement regarding racial equity impact. So what does that actually mean? What does it mean for our city council and city staff to begin looking at a racial equity framework? Councilmember Smith and I were able to put together a blog last week, so if you want to dig into more of those issues, you can look on the city website for the blog that we have up there, and we'll be learning in this process as we go along. This is something new that some municipalities are adopting, but it is a relatively new framework to the work of city government, and so we're gonna figure it out as we go, and I'm really excited about it, so, all right. I think those are all my updates, I'll turn over to the city manager.
Thank you. Regarding the Tacoma Junction meetings, last week Mayor Stewart requested information on the breakdown of respondents to the surveys about Tacoma Junction by Ward. We should have that information next week, and, and note that there is, the second survey is posted about the second subject area of access and public space, so urge people to fill out the survey if they haven't already, and we will be getting that information back to you. Councilmember Kovar, the, late last week, the staff shared a draft letter of interest solicitation with the council on the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, we've heard back from two councilmembers with some suggestions and comments, and so we're working on that, and we'll get back with everyone, and we may need to follow that back up with the council and then get it out hopefully early next week.
Did you have? The item about cloudburst, I think we'll have to, I don't know the timing, so I'll have to get back to you on that one. I wanted to bring to the council's attention an item, an issue that happened on Willow Avenue, WSSC was doing a project, and it's had some very interesting problems, wanted you to know about it, and we will be sending a letter to WSSC about this. There was a failing sewer line on Willow Avenue, during the course of the work, WSSC excavated a trench very close to two very large tulip poplar trees, both in the 38 diameter, 38-inch diameter size. The WSSC had agreed to do excavation by hand and root prune, they agreed to not use any excavated, excavation equipment in the backyards where this trench was located, and their arborist did notify the WSSC project manager and contractor that they would need to go through the city's process, permit process if it affected the trees. They did not, they went ahead and did work, they were, they ended up cutting very close to these two trees, in one case about nine feet from the tree, and on another, maybe 12 to 15 feet. The WSSC has spoken to the impacted property owners, obviously these are wonderful trees in people's backyards, the WSSC arborist has recommended tree removal for at least one of the two trees, that it would be a danger, given the, the impact to the tree roots. We're waiting some information on the other one. In addition, and obviously the cost of the tree removal would be borne by WSSC. In addition to the impact on the two trees, WSSC also installed the sewer line across the top of our existing storm drain system between two, the two residences. Originally, apparently, the sewer line was encased in the concrete of the top of this storm drain trench, and that's how it was prepared in the early 1900s. When they came in to do the work, they instead, they replaced it in the same place, which is not good practice. One of the things that caused there to be a problem was that the maps of the area, which were originally WSSC, I guess, related maps, did not show the line in that location, so it wasn't something that we would have known about in our preliminary meetings. They went ahead and did this without consulting us, and this is our storm drain, so we're not happy that we learned this information after the fact, it's about 40 feet long in length where they did this, and so we anticipate issuing a formal letter of complaint from the city to WSSC to go on record about the lack of communication related to the storm drain installation and regarding the violation of the city's tree law. So we did have communication, the, the project manager and its involved has had a good reputation in, in working with us, nevertheless, this was one where it did not work well, and I wanted the, the council to be aware that we are following up on that item.
Did WSSC, why, they've done good work with us in the past, but why?
We, we don't know, I mean, I think everybody simply was just trying to get the job done.
When we send that letter, can we also CC our county council members and our state delegation?
Sure.
Thank you.
On a different note, there has been some, a citizen has asked about some information on our efforts to, related to mosquito control and, and preparation to kind of hold off the Zika virus, so I did want to share some information, our emergency manager, Ron Hardy, has prepared some information, that last year, the city staff took a number of measures to ensure that information was available to residents about Zika, how it spreads, and the precautions that people can take to protect themselves, and we did quite a lot of work on that, including door-to-door in one area where there was a Zika scare. As it starts to warm up, we wanted to let you know that we're going to continue to work on these matters in coordination with the county. We're also working with an explorer scout who's doing a project on Zika awareness, and then we will be continuing to push out the information in multiple formats, so I just wanted to let you know, that's, it may not be the hot topic at the very moment, but at some point it will be, when the snow melts, the mosquitoes may show back up. Speaking of snow, our neighborhood services team was out inspecting sidewalk clearance, we don't have the totals yet on how many courtesy notices were given on blocked or unshovelled sidewalks. From personal observation, a lot of sidewalks were shoveled, and I really appreciate the community for stepping up and taking advantage of the day when it wasn't quite so frozen to actually get those cleared. I want to give some kudos to, as the mayor had noted, to our police department staff and the recreation department staff for the presentation on kind of steps related to immigration, actions, and executive immigration, actions, and executive orders. And note that Captain Collington did a great job in coordinating that and getting the word out, and it was wonderful how well-attended this was from so many different schools in the area. That was a particularly, a particular strong point and a nice, actually, it was a very nice event for us.
Do we know how many schools were represented?
Yes, I can send you, I can send you the list. Yes, it was more than that, because we had both public and private schools in the area.
At least seven, seven or eight.
Seven or eight schools. I mean, it was a good number. And I also want to, I guess, back on the snow, give kudos to the great Snow Angels and the Difference Makers Club with assistance by Mr. Brian Garing, and Paula Lasowski for being the city's contact for that process. At least 75 houses were shoveled by the Snow Angels yesterday and the day before, so we appreciate that very much. I note that, I realize I left off this information that Councilmember Mail wanted about positions that have not been filled. We've not advertised the lobbyist position yet. We will have information on our various vacancies. As many have noted, the police chief, Alan Goldberg, has resigned. That position won't be advertised for some time, and I'll be having discussions with the council about that. I did want to note that I've been awfully busy working on budget, and I will continue to be busy for that for the next few weeks. So, I haven't been quite as responsive on some emails. I appreciate the deputy city manager for picking up on some of that, but if for some reason that's a problem, please let me know.
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the, in terms of businesses and snow clearing, the Eden House, Eden Park Guest House, and the auto repair place across from it.
Okay.
As well as, I think, the, I can't remember the name of it, but the large office building down on Carroll where Willow Street Yoga is based, but the Carroll side of it.
Tacoma Business Center.
Each of those places, as of 4:00 on Tuesday, was not cleared.
Okay. Thank you.
And just, I tried to put out some information, but if people can log that kind of thing into my TKPK or give us a call, we were able to follow up. I know we did some inspections on our own proactively, but it's always great to have the actual information shared so we can make sure that the community notices are made. Thanks.
Great. Thanks. All right. I'm going to turn it over now to Councilmember Smith to give us an update on legislative matters, and I just want to thank Councilmember Kovar, who's leaving us for some reason, for going Monday to testify on our library bond bill. So, Councilmember.
Mayor, I'm going to be brief. The legislative committee did not meet this past week, so we have a conference call scheduled for tomorrow. Biggest updates I have for everyone, highway user reserve, highway user revenue restoration is moving forward. The bills that are sponsored by MML are hopefully going to be, make it to the floor this year in either iteration. But the grants that the governor has applied to municipalities and the counties in the states for highway user revenue will remain intact. It is not exactly everything that we want, but we are getting more money than we could have. So, I mean, it's not a great situation, but there will be some money for municipalities in the counties regarding highway user revenue. The income tax forgiveness bill is moving forward also. It's HB 1433. House Ways and Means Committee voted to pass the bill, and the Senate has already passed this bill. And this is, how many municipalities now? It is 74 municipalities around the state are asking for income tax that is owed to the state after an audit that was done a couple of years ago be forgiven. A number of municipalities in Montgomery County are in this situation. The mayor sent out a letter to members of the General Assembly, especially leadership, asking them to support this legislation. I think it's a, you know, it's not the fault of the municipalities. This is something that originated out of the Comptroller's Office. The foreclosure legislation is moving forward. HB 702, which will expedite and streamline the foreclosure process in Maryland. The goal of bill, the goal of the bill is to allow a secured party to take control of a property in foreclosure early in the process. And then there's HB 1048 would require updated owner information to be provided to the Department of Labor, Licensing, and Registration. And finally, we have HB 954, which has passed the House, requires DLLR to establish foreclosure purchaser to send a copy of initial property registration and notice containing any updated information. So, those bills are moving forward. Foreclosures are still a problem in the state of Maryland, but it looks like we are going to get some movement this session. The Maryland Association of Realtors are on board with these bills, and so is Maryland's Bankers Association. In the past, the bankers have been the biggest problem with trying to get any type of foreclosure legislation through the General Assembly. Couple more bills I wanted to talk about. Body camera, HB 767 moved favorably with amendments out of the House Judiciary Committee and will now go to the floor of the House. This bill, of course, as I mentioned before, is supported by MML. It will help with the PIA, the Public Information Act, request for police body camera footage. A similar bill passed out of the House of Delegates last year, but did not receive a vote in the Senate. So, hopefully, we will get support out of the Senate this year. And then finally, there is a collective bargaining bill heard in the House. This bill was not supported by MML. It's HB 1370. It establishes a statewide mandate in, Maryland municipalities hate the word mandate, on all local governments with 20 or more employees to authorize by ordinance collective bargaining with their employees. Currently, 15 municipalities in the state collectively bargain with certain segments of their employee base, but right now, it's optional, and we think that is the best way to go forward in the state of Maryland. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. All right. Our legislative update next week will probably be a little longer because crossover day in Annapolis is coming up, and we will have an update on the bills that we've taken position on and see if there's any amendments or other things. So, the prepared next week is going to be a bit longer. All right. Going to our voting session now. Our first item is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for HVAC controls for the community center in the auditorium. Do we have anything to say on this, or?
We've brought this up before. We're really looking forward to getting the control system. The thing that's particularly nice about this system is that it will allow new units across the facility to be able to be controlled from one location and to cooperate with each other.
Great.
Well, of course, it's cold. It's cold outside, so we're...
Freezing outside.
We're in good shape right now, but we do want this to move forward. The fiscal impact of the action is $115,000.
Before I ask for this to be moved, does anyone have any clarifying questions? Okay. Someone like to move them?
Does it move?
Councilmember Mail, second.
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, second. This is a single reading ordinance. So, clerk, do you want to call the roll or call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Karashi?
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Next, we have a consent agenda with appointments to some resident committees. Who would like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, second.
Second.
Councilmember Smith. Any comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Yep. All right. Next, we have a work session, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Braithwaite, our head of public works, as discussion of stormwater requirements, proposed project, and the stormwater fee.
There we go. It's coming on.
Oh, we got updates.
Don't turn off your computer. I love that. While it's updating or whatever, let me just say that this is a particularly, I think, informative presentation on how the stormwater program works, what some of the changes are in the stormwater requirements from the state level, the costs of those kinds of things, the list of projects that we'll be working on, and eventually, the need for increase in our stormwater fee to be able to accommodate the expenses related to that, and some of the options that we might be able to consider on it. Daryl, why don't you just go ahead and start talking, and we'll maybe catch up?
Some of you may have seen pieces of this presentation that I'm going to be reporting on.
Oh, wait, wait, just a second. Oh, sorry. Now, you're good.
Very good.
Now, you're on.
Now, you're on.
All right. You didn't have, no, you didn't have, the microphone wasn't turned on. Now it is.
So, I was just talking to myself, which I do. So, just hit the arrow keys for this?
I don't think we have.
We still don't have presentation? All righty.
It's restarting.
Basically, the, we inherited our stormwater system. It was originally owned and managed by the WSSC. We're talking 100-plus years ago. In the 90s, the state of Maryland decided that the water and sewer utility was no longer able to own the stormwater system because of the inherent conflict and issues related. So, at that point, the city had a decision to make whether it would take over ownership of this system or whether it would pass it off to the county. There was quite a bit of community discussion at the time, and council and mayor at that point spent a lot of time thinking hard about this issue and decided to jump in, so to speak, and assume ownership and maintenance responsibility for the stormwater system. So, first active order was to find out what it is we inherited. So, we did a complete survey and inventory of the system, changed the mapping that we had, which was literally hand-drawn maps, 50, 60, 70 years old, that we got from WSSC and put it onto a GIS layer. And over the years, we've been correcting and improving that system as we have elements of the system re-inspected. Our main fun goal at that point was to identify where our pipes are, our inlets are, what they're made of, what condition they're in, and that process has been an ongoing one since then. As you can imagine, for a system as old as ours, wide variety of structures. We have beautiful hand-stacked stone and slate lid top, culverts big enough to walk in. We've got corrugated metal pipes. We've got segmented clay pipes that are just about falling apart way past their useful life. And then, of course, the newer reinforced concrete pipes, and now, everything that we do is in plastic. So, we've got every, every type. It's kind of like a history of stormwater over the, over the decades when you look at our stormwater system. So, initially, the focus of the activity was on maintenance and dealing with catastrophic, not catastrophic, but dealing with failures in inlet top busts, or somebody drives over it, or somebody's got a sinkhole in their yard. So, that's a lot of what initially the city spent its time doing. Interestingly enough, at that point, about 40% to 60% of the budget came from the general tax revenue, and whatever else was needed was sort of applied via surplus from the previous years. So, it was really sort of shoestring budget based on need year to year in those early, early years. The city began looking at a more systematic and comprehensive approach for funding the system in the mid 90s, and in fact, got a grant through EPA to do some of that work and had Greenhorn and Amera help us take a look at the system and how to explore, at that point, a fairly novel innovation, which was the stormwater utility fee. The benefit of a stormwater utility fee is that it's applied to everyone. So, whether you're tax exempt, whether you're a nonprofit, private, commercial, institutional, everybody pays the fee based on a standard, and our standard, of course, is the amount of impervious area that exists on a property. Those things that generate stormwater, we're talking rooftops, driveways, paved areas, buildings. So, if you've got something that restricts water flow into the ground, that's going to generate runoff. Can I do it again? Anyway, it's a dependable source of funding when you have a utility fee. It's less impacted by economic changes, for instance, than a tax-based fee. If a tax-based fee, you have good years, bad years, every three years, you know, in our county. The reassessments happen, so it tends to avoid those fluctuations, and it also doesn't pit that program against other programs vying for tax dollars. And so, it's a way to create an independent-funded source that's very clearly identified for its purpose. Those funds are dedicated. The only thing that those funds are spent on, that people pay into our stormwater fee, are stormwater functions. So, it's a dedicated fund. It is seen as fair and equitable, and as I mentioned, all the property owners contribute. Our fee structure, which we've had in place since 97, thank you. Great. And is it anywhere else yet? It'll get there. Okay. The way our fee system is set up, we established a fee structure for single-family properties based on an assessment of what the average impervious area was for property. I just recently saw a study that was done by Black and Beach. They do every few years an analysis nationwide of stormwater utility fees. And our impervious area, which our average is 1,228 square feet, is within the pretty much moderate range of those that they found in their nationwide evaluation. So, every single-family property is billed the same amount with the assumption that with our lot size and typical house structure, that's the equivalent residential unit, the amount of impervious area that's found on most single-family lots. For other types of properties, the commercial and institutional properties, they're billed basically on their actual amount of impervious area. So, that takes the square footage of those rooftops, driveways, parking lots, divides it by the ERU, which is 1,228 square feet, and then multiplies that by the base rate, which currently, our base rate is $55 and has been since 2000, our fiscal year 13. When the first base rate was established, it was $24, and as you can see there, it has slowly worked its way up every few years, 99 to just over 28, '07 to 48, and we've had this rate in place to 55. When we first evaluated that amount of impervious area, our consultant at the time used digital maps and planometric information from aerial photographs, so basically peering over maps, trying to mark out what the paved area was, where the building footprint was, overlaid with the tax records to get at that information. One of the things that we're hoping to do in the next fiscal year is, I have another look taken at that to make sure that the assumptions that were made at that point are accurate. The level of information and data that's available now far surpasses what was available then, and is much easier to gather. So, we're hoping to take another look at that to see if our equivalent residential unit figure is, still remains accurate, and to see if those estimations about the impervious area, particularly for our commercial facilities, is, is in the ballpark of correct. Just in terms of, you know, property types in Tacoma Park, you see there, obviously, most of our property types are single-family. And then, for the others, they're broken out, a small percentage of multifamily, commercial, and tax-exempt. Now, that multifamily number, of course, raises eyebrows. Everybody says 5%. What are you talking about? Again, we're looking at building footprint, not residential units, not people, but the actual building footprint itself. In terms of the amount of impervious area that those property types generate, sort of flips those numbers on there upside down. So, the single-family, even though it's 86% of the property types in Tacoma Park, contributes about 37% of our impervious area, whereas the other developed, which are only 14%, contributes about 60%. Those missing 3% is the streets, roads, and government properties. So, who pays what? As of last, this current fiscal year, we billed 3,885 property owners, generated about $414,000. You can see the breakout there of single-family, no other developed, and the amount of money that each of those categories of properties contributed. Just for way of comparison, our largest payer is Washington Venice University. Just for way of comparison, our largest payer is Washington Venice University, paying $14,290 this current fiscal year, and right behind it, Washington Venice Hospital, at just under $12,000. Drops down significantly below that, about 19 commercial properties pay between $2,000 and $7,000 currently with our rate structure. We recently did a quick scrub ourselves and identified another 84 additional properties that are going to be added to the utility fee bill. Eighty of those are single-family, and four are commercial. So the next time we do the invoicing, we'll have a slightly larger number of properties that we're billing. And that actually came about as a result of just additional building in the city since the fees were originally established, as well as, you know, a little margin of error, but most of it was, you know, since '96 to now, about 70 properties or so have been added in the city. This gets to be a little dense, but one of the key factors, why do we do this? Obviously, we're environmental, and we're good guys, and we always care about water, but we're driven by compliance with two very important laws. One is the Federal Clean Water Act, and that breaks out for us in two ways. You'll oftentimes, when you go into stormwater conferences, hear a lot of acronyms thrown around. There's the NPDES, which stands for National Pollution Discharge and Elimination System. It basically is the regulatory framework by which anybody, government, commercial property, industrial property, if you're discharging into the waters of the United States, you need to have an NPDES permit. So as a local government, we're responsible for that discharge, and for us, it's pipes throughout fall, it's our runoff. So we're responsible for managing that discharge. We're considered a Phase II community. Phase I communities are the counties. Phase II communities are the smaller jurisdictions. And there's been, you know, second-tier approach in terms of requirements to meet federal laws, and when the standards kick in. We received our first NPDES permit in 2003. There's, those are five-year laws. It expired in 2008, but we didn't get a new one. Basically, at that point, between the state and the federal government, there was a lot of effort underway at establishing the next level of permits. So MDE, Maryland Department of Environment, has finally, just this end of last year, issued its proposed new set of regulations. They are similar to what was previously required, but they also add a new requirement. So previously, for a NPDES permit, you had to show efforts in six minimum control measures. Obviously, public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination. For those that don't understand a term, illicit discharge is any illegal access into the storm drain pipes. It's not intended to be there. If somebody's got a washing machine, that they poke a hole in our storm drain and dump water into it, that's illicit discharge. So we're responsible for having programs in place to try to seek that out, identify it, and stop it when we find it. Construction runoff control, which is currently being done by Montgomery County on our behalf, sediment and erosion control, and post-construction stormwater management. Our biggest activity there are the permit requirements that we have for anybody who does construction in the city disturbing more than 5,000 square feet. So our stormwater permit system is identified in that category. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping, which is a lot of where our innovative measures come out of in terms of trying to control and improve the water quality from the, from stormwater. And the new requirement that's been added is something that we've been aware of, was in the works for a while. They call it the impervious area restoration requirement. And that is a requirement that we need to treat runoff from 20% of the impervious area not currently treated. So for us, this requirement comes into place since 2006. We've been working on this since that time, and I'll show you a little later in the presentation some of the ways that we've been trying to address that treatment for the untreated areas. In the past, stormwater treatment was just a matter of flood control and keeping water out of people's basements. Basically, you put a pipe where the stream used to be, you connected a bunch of other pipes to it, you had inlet boxes on the street, so that when the water went, you know, rains came and the water went into the street, it didn't flood your yard, it didn't pond, but it instead, it went into inlets, into pipes, and out into Sligo Creek or Long Branch. That's no longer business as usual. Our goal is not just to get water off the street. Obviously, we're also concerned about flooding and ponding and personal property damage. But we now have requirements to treat that runoff, or at least a good percentage of it, to try to reduce the pollution level of it, the speed of it, and its ability to do harm to the water quality of the receiving bodies. We also have requirements that Maryland puts on itself. The acronym there is WIP, the Watershed Implementation Plan. So it's basically a planning process that the Department of Environment in Maryland has put together, which initial goal was to establish limits for certain pollutants and assign that to jurisdictions. They were called TMDLs, so your tax total maximum daily load, and they set limitations on those pollution levels for nitrogen, phosphorus, sediments, and trash. The counties have been assigned total maximum daily load requirements. Those assignments have not been issued to municipalities. Instead, the framework for compliance is expected to be controlled by managing this 20% of the runoff. So if you manage the runoff, if you're creating treatment facilities that are capturing and treating at least 20% of the runoff, you will, by default, if nothing else, be dealing with phosphorus, nitrogen, sediment, and trash. Those measures will be expected to make improvements in those pollution levels. That said, as I mentioned, we've been working on this ourselves since 2006, kind of getting our feet wet and trying to understand what it means to change your system from one of collect and control to one of treat and manage. So for us, our 20% goal breaks down as such. The city has about 1,200 acres of land, just under 400 acres of which are impervious, the roads, the buildings, parking lots, and sidewalks. So 20% of that is just over 79 acres. So we need to provide treatment for 79 acres of land in order to meet the requirements. Since 2006, we've provided treatment for just over 13 acres. That's through bioretention facilities, permeable pavement and filtration systems. We've completed stream restoration projects that provided just under six acres of treatment. We've done outfall stabilization for a little over one acre of treatment. Our street sweeping program gives us an equivalent credit that we can take once, and the expectation is that you maintain that program ad infinitum, but you can't claim more credit for it year to year. You basically, you achieve a level of credit based on the road miles and the type of sweeping you offer, and that is a requirement that you need to maintain and keep in place in order to continue to be able to claim that credit. Tree planting is a very strongly promoted activity for stormwater management control. So every 100 acre, 100 trees we plant gives us a half acre of credit. So since 2006, we've got 8.38 acres. Bottom line on that is we've achieved 33 acres of treatment, or 42% of the goal towards that, just over 79 acres of treatment. The state has set an expectation that jurisdictions meet 70% of their goal by this year, and 100% by 2025. We are not alone in falling short of that requirement. We were just at a workshop the other day. The state is very much a cheerleader on this and doesn't want people to feel bad, but they realize there's a big learning curve, and some of the science, some of the technology, some of the calculations are just now sort of hitting the ground running. So we anticipate that potentially, some of the treatments that we've already achieved will be reevaluated, and we might be doing slightly better, hopefully not slightly worse than we assumed. We've also been learning as we go. In terms of our minimum control measures, and I won't go into detail on this, it is available in a couple of places. We do an annual report to, for our NPDES, and that's available on the city's website, and it goes in great detail about the different ways in which we provide public education, public involvement, illicit detection, discharge, and the rest of it. Skipping through there, this is just a couple of slides. In terms of what we're now calling our impervious area restoration program, and used to be called by us, our best management practices, we've installed 53 facilities since 2006. Forty-six of those were bioretention facilities. Two were wetland modular systems. We've had a couple of filtration basins, a wet pond, and some traffic circles that do filtration and under drains. And as I mentioned, we've done some stream restoration. This is just a couple of pictures of some of the projects that we've had underway. We're hoping to get on the website shortly a sort of pictorial travel through time of the 53 facilities that we have in place. So you'll be able to look at a map, in fact, a map similar to this, on the website, click on one of the red dots, and it'll take you to photos and some details about what the facility is, when it was built, how much it costs, and what type of treatment level it's given. Those red dots, we've added a few to them, so we've got a couple of facilities on the upper ends of Garland that aren't on there, and we just this year finished a couple of facilities at Hayward in March and Glazewood in March. Now to the money. And first, a correction, that 2016 should say 2017, so that's this current year's budget. And also, a caveat related to that, I took out money in the budget associated with the Flower Avenue and Green Street program, just because it kind of confuses the details. It shows grant monies in and expenditures not coinciding, so that program is underway and will require quite a bit of city as well as other funding sources, and we've identified that in other ways. I just pulled it out for the purposes of explaining sort of where we came to, where we are this year, and where we think we need to go for next year and the, at least another five years after that. So the capital expenditures are those that actually relate to the construction cost of new facilities. Maintenance and services is everything from office supplies to the outside labor to maintain, to the engineering services to help support our subcontract work and some bank charges. Personnel-wise, we do a heck of a lot of work with a very few amount of personal resources. 50% of our city engineer is funded through this program. His other 50% is in the city engineering budget within Public Works, 40% of our special project coordinator, and 25% of our construction manager. As I mentioned before, a little over, about $414,000 is generated by our utility fee this year, a little less than $1,000 from permit fees. That bounces around a little bit, but it's never really significantly much. A city built out like ours doesn't have a lot of construction going on that requires the use of permit fees. And this kind of breaks down those figures a little, a little more in detail. What I'm trying to show here is what budget level we had in this current fiscal year and what we're looking to increase it by next year. Obviously, currently, those level of services is just over $500,000. We're looking for an increase of close to $700,000 in FY18 and beyond. And I've showed the way those costs break out. We've got the personnel, office supplies, our outside labor and parts. And for those types of expenditures, think repairs to existing systems, improvements to existing systems, so there's things we have in the ground that we're either need to repair or trying to make do their job better. Engineering services, we're looking to, as I mentioned, have the, our impervious area and equivalent residential unit calculations evaluated, and there's funding in that for that. That's a one-time thing. But in addition to that, just design and inspection support is also funded out of that budget line. Subcontract work, the work that goes on out of that particular budget is critical to meeting our NPDES requirements. Video inspection of our system, maintenance of our bioretention facilities, we currently do by contract, six times a year, a landscaping firm comes out and does maintenance of that. And water quality testing, which we've done every few years, we're now required to do that annually. In terms of capital projects, those are the new and big projects. Those are additions to the system, not maintenance or repairs of existing systems. So you see there, we've got several projects listed that we're hoping to get online. In addition to that, we are hoping to purchase a truck scale, half of the funding of which is in the stormwater budget and half is in the Public Works budget. We're hoping to have our own ability to weigh some of the waste that we manage, both for our own tracking purposes, but for things like cleaning storm drains, if we weigh the material in our street sweeping debris. If we weigh the material that we're getting, we may be able to show a greater pollution reduction than is currently available through simple calculations based on road miles. So in terms of the proposed rate increase, our current base rate of $55 generates $414 of revenue. To achieve the annual funding level that I've presented, the base rate would need to increase to 92, just by way of categorizing it. About every dollar of the utility fee generates about $7,600 of revenue. We've already said the breakout of single-family and other properties that are billed. We also have a fund balance in our stormwater fund. As I mentioned, all the money that's generated by the utility fee is kept in a fund, and revenue comes in, expenditures go out. In previous years, if we haven't expended all the money that was received, there's a fund balance left. We currently, at the end of FY16, had a fund balance of $173,000. Some of these funds could be used to cover increased costs in lieu of the full proposed rate increase for a limited period of time, or it could be retained to cover unexpected expenditures or dips in revenue. For instance, we're going to have to be replacing our street sweeper in the next few years. That's a $250,000 piece of equipment. Because it was purchased through the stormwater fee in the past, it's not an item that we have on our equipment replacement reserve, so that's a big-ticket item that will have a significant amount of funding necessary to replace it. And again, it's critical to meeting our state and federal mandates. I think I've been through most of this before, some of the changes and why we need that increase in annual budget. We have to do annual water quality testing now, which is about $15,000 a year. We're going to evaluate our impervious area calculations. The video inspection and system cleaning that we've done, that we've done, we'd like to stay on, every four years, we go through the system, so about a quarter of the system a year. The costs for that have increased dramatically. What we used to spend $25,000 to $35,000 a year is now going to cost us about $55,000 a year to stay on track with that quarter of the program a year. That is crucial to keeping our system functional and to helping us plan repairs that we need to do, because we can see in the videos where systems are failing or where they're starting to deteriorate. So rather than surprises, where we got a sinkhole and all of a sudden, whoa, we need to do something, we can plan ahead and identify those things before they become problematic. In addition to the added cost, we're also getting quite a bit for that money. The video inspection is now being done on a GIS basis, so we get better and better data back each time we have our system evaluated. And as I mentioned, we're hoping we can claim credit for treatment of an additional four to eight acres based on our video, or our cleaning and inspection system. We hope that once we weigh the debris, which haven't claimed credit for the cleaning before, we're hoping we can add quite a significant amount of treatment acres. Increased funding for system maintenance and enhancement, as you can imagine, you know, everything costs money. To address known system defects and improvement, we'll add some additional treatment credit that we can claim. Our previous funding level is about $130,000 a year, so we're asking for it to be increased by about $15,000 to $145,000 annually. A couple of slides later, you'll see a list of projects that we've developed. Those are the projects that we've sort of identified over the next six or seven years. And so we've tried to spread them out to show that level of expenditure over the year. Contractual support is critical. As I mentioned, the small amount of staff hours we actually have on the ground. We use maintenance support for our bioretention facilities, and we are going to have to be doing much more documentation in terms of system inspection and maintenance, both for our public facilities as well as private facilities. So we're about to kick off a new program where we will be sending letters out to anybody who has a private stormwater facility that that has been approved since 2006, asking them to do a self-inspection, and we'll be doing a field inspection as part of the federal and state mandates. In terms of projects for our capital budget, again, we had a previous annual expenditure amount of about $130,000. We're asking for that to increase to about $240,000, and I have a list of projects that will sort of show what's going to be done for that amount of money over time. So as I mentioned before, we're about 40-some percent towards our goal. Where do we think we're going to be by 2025? Based on the types of credit that we estimate with the list of projects we've identified, as well as the assumptions that we've put in place before with everything related to tree planting and street sweeping and our leaf collection, we tree planting and street sweeping and our leaf collection, we, to date, we've treated a little over 33 acres. We think by 2025, we will add an additional 40, or a little more than 40 acres of treatment. So we'll be just under 74 acres of treatment by 2025, which is about five acres short of our 20% goal of 79 acres. So what does that mean? Well, we're not sweating in our boots quite yet. Again, a lot of this is a work in progress. The new permit and the formulas and calculations are still being worked out. It's likely that we'll better refine our calculations, as will the state in terms of credit. We're also working very hard to identify additional programs to add credit towards treatment. We've identified erosion control and slope stabilization projects that we've done over time, and we're hoping that we can show them as part of the way to improve the reduction of pollution to the waters. Our original impervious area calculation will be evaluated, and it may change things, plus or minus. And as I mentioned, we're hoping to increase the amount of credit we get for street sweeping and our system maintenance. We may require additional funding before 2025 in order to meet our goal. So that is all I have there. We had a couple, and maybe you have them in your packets, a chart of the proposed stormwater project list. It's a two-sided document. Yeah, all right. So not to belabor the point, but one side is capital projects, which again, those are the new system projects. At least three times a year, we sit around a table and try to identify projects that we have not already identified. And we're looking for areas that will enable us to claim significant improvement. So that list of capital projects represents an average of $240,000, $250,000 of work annually that we've spread out between now and FY '24. It's not a static list. It will no doubt change, as our previous lists have. And each situation has some parameters. Sometimes it's on private property, sometimes it's technology, sometimes it's grant support. So, you know, we just keep working towards these projects and implement them as we can. You see there, that column that's EIA, that means equivalent impervious area. So basically, that shows you what credit we think we can get for each of those projects. And again, this is not a final document by any means, but it gives you a sense of scale in terms of how much each of those projects will add towards our treatment goal. And we're not really folk, you know, we're not really going after a treatment goal just to go after a treatment goal. It actually translates into improved water quality, so I don't want it to be misunderstood that I'm just adding numbers and for numbers' sake, it really, the assumption is that the water quality in Sligo Creek and Long Branch will improve as a result of these projects that we're doing. On the other side is the system repair and improvements. That's the other sort of big-ticket item that I mentioned was $130,000 annually. We're asking for it increased. And so you'll see there a list of projects. These are existing systems that we're trying to work on and improve. The level of clarity there about the work that needs to be done is probably greater than the capital project list in that all these systems have been TV inspected. We've got, you know, history there. We know kind of what we're dealing with. And so those are projects that we've identified and are waiting to put into place for system improvements. And again, we show an equivalent impervious area treatment credit that we can get through each of these projects. So that's all I had presented at this point, just to try to give you a sense of what our system is, what we've done, and kind of where we're going.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I've seen a few of these through the years. One quick question, and that is, there's a credit for trees planted. Is there a penalty for trees? Pepco cuts down. These are right along the same areas where the bioretention basin is.
Yes, sometimes they are. With our, any utility removal, we have them, they're required to do a tree replanting requirement. So some of the funds that they use are put into our tree fund, and then we use to plant trees. So it, those removals are...
They're compensated for rather than penalizing us on the acreage.
Right. We can't really penalize the utilities, per se, but we ask them to contribute.
No, I'm saying that we're not penalized on our acreage calculations on here.
No, in terms of loss of tree canopy cover, no. The state has not yet used that as a measurement in terms of tree canopy cover. Basically, they're just asking for additional tree planting credit.
Okay. And then my other question is, you know, you've got a lot of things here, a lot of material, a lot of money. What percentage of this is mandated by law, and what is it that we're adding to that to be good guys?
Well, I think you can, I guess my answer on that would be, given where we are currently since working on this since 2006, at about 40% of our goal, and showing what we think we can do with the level of funding that we're asking for over through the years of 2025. All of the program is federally mandated by the state. Everything that we're doing, we're doing towards counting credit, meeting our permit condition requirements. So there isn't any part of the program that isn't tied into our NPDES program or our watershed implementation plan.
No, I appreciate that you said that, you know, we're trying to be good guys, but we're not just spending money to be good guys. We're trying to meet the law.
Yep, yep.
All right. And I would tend to certainly support this, although I would maybe look for money when we talk about the overall budget, that maybe we can find some money and decrease tax rate to make up to the homeowners. And I realize it's not a one-for-one on the homeowners that are involved.
Yeah. One factor of income that isn't reflected at all is grants, and that's because they're a little unpredictable, especially in the current political climate. We have been successful in the past at our grant applications, Flower Avenue, Green Street, and Ethan Allen Project as well. Both have a bioretention and stormwater function. So we'll continue to go after those sources of money. We just don't know whether we can count that towards our revenue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mehl?
Thank you for the presentation and your work on this. I guess I was initially surprised, because I had thought, when we had the last presentation on this, that we were ahead of the required schedule?
We thought so, too.
Okay, so good. So that was...
Yes, we refined our calculations, particularly in terms of the bioretention treatment credit. We were using some assumptions that were overly optimistic. So once we scrubbed those numbers and put them through again, we realized that the actual treatment credit was less than. So these numbers, I think I've done this presentation three times, have sort of been reduced down in terms of our bioretention treatment credit over time. But we feel at this point that we fully understand the formulas at this point and have had our numbers looked at by state staff, and we think that we're on solid ground.
Okay. I wanted to ask, let me back up with one more technical question, which is, is our, essentially, do we own a utility? Right? If we ran a water system that provided water to people's houses like Gaithersburg or Rockville do, that would be a utility. It would have utility rates and a board. That is basically the equivalent that we have here.
Yes. The council serves as the stormwater utility board. The system of pipes and inlets is our conveyor system.
I've just never thought of it that way. I've never thought of it as like, you know, we do it, we use the word utility, but I've never thought of like, okay, we were the board of utility, the public utility. Now I can go to those meetings when somebody, you know, is in a meeting publicly on utilities.
We have more power than we thought.
The, I wonder, and you may know the answer to this already, but if not, I'd appreciate the city asking the state in writing and sharing the response back with us. It doesn't look like we get any credit for our lawn pesticide law. It doesn't look like, the way this is set up, that we get credit for addressing illicit discharge, as opposed to we're required to, you know, pay attention to it and have a program. It doesn't look like we get any credit for that.
Right.
And so I wonder if we could ask for the state to give us credit or to clarify those two issues.
We can certainly ask. Now's a great time to ask, because with the new permit, everybody's thinking about what the calculations mean. With any of these laws, you have to fit within their framework. So they're focused on nitrogen, phosphorus, trash, floatables, sediment, pH. So for some of those things, it's hard to pin it down to that amount. Obviously, illicit discharge oftentimes ends up being sewage in your stormwater, so that's nitrogen right there. One of the other issues is creating a, creating a strong and credible base level so that you can show actual scientific quality improvements over time. Our water quality sampling, particularly when we start doing it annually, should create a base level that we would be able to use to try to point to that. One of the other factors that we can't escape from is we're the bottom of, the water that's coming to the city doesn't start in the city, right? So we're the recipients of everything that came down from the county and from DC before us. So it's kind of a two-edged sword. As we build our database of water quality, we want to claim it, particularly if we're showing improvement, but if it shows it getting worse and worse, and we're making all those efforts to improve our end, you know, we start pointing fingers at the other guy. So it can work both ways, given the nature of water and gravity. And we are, you know, at Sligo Creek and Long Branch, the recipient at the bottom end.
Yep, okay. If you could just, if you could ask and provide the answer back to us, because those are things we're going to do anyway, and it'd be nice to know, you know, the answer. You mentioned that you didn't put the Flower Avenue project on here, but because there's, I think, both permeable pavement and bioretention as part of that project, are those acres counted in the 33 that we have?
No, they're not, because we're basically just doing enough treatment, basically doing enough treatment to address the added impervious area that we're adding with the sidewalk, the missing sidewalk on one side. So there isn't enough impervious area reduction or enough treatment available. One of the challenges with the Flower Avenue project, as you may recall, is we have no infrastructure underneath, so we're very limited to what we can do. If we had a storm drain pipe running under that street, we could have done much, much more in terms of capturing, treating, and discharging water into the existing infrastructure without worry about damage to adjacent private properties.
So that was basically a no-net gain.
Yeah, it's a no-net gain, right, right.
It's not making the problem worse, but it's not helping us with our requirement. Okay. The other question I had, a little bit similar to Councilmember Siemens' question, looking at the calculations quickly, it looks like if we planted, if we're planting 200 acres, 200 trees, and that's getting us, you know, four credits, four acres' worth of credit collectively over a period of time, that if we planted 9,200 trees...
More trees.
We would equal our entire requirement. And assuming $100 per tree, that's $900,000 over the next, not eight years. That's far cheaper. And so I say that by way of, that's a back-of-the-envelope calculation, but you have a chart in here where you laid out the different strategies to get to acreage. And I'd really like to see another version of that chart, that you come back to us and give a third column that says the sort of approximate cost...
Ah, okay.
...over the entire period for that strategy. Because it could be that shifting 10% into trees or 20% into something else, away from a more costly method, allows us to drop the rate by $5, or, you know, otherwise just be, or think about other goals that we get out of trees or other treatments. That's the, those are the list of my questions. The other thing I wanted to sort of bring to your attention, and I mentioned it to the city manager today and to residents, is often when we are making investments in something, there's no clear financing for it, like the library. So if we borrow money for the library, we have to find some way to pay the bond or pay the borrowing back. There's no, we have to offset it from our general fund revenue, or we have to raise additional general fund revenue. But in this case, we have a, you know, fixed amount we know is going to come in every year at whatever rate we set. And it's for a specific purpose, and it's for achieving a goal by a certain deadline, after which we achieve the goal, the goal may get moved. But, you know, the assumption is sort of we get there and then we have a lower cost. We have a maintenance cost, but we don't have a new construction cost. And so to me, that's sort of a recipe that, in addition to the fact that we're behind, it, to me, raises the issue of borrowing money to get there faster and potentially not borrowing or not, basically not needing to raise the amount by as much to borrow. So if we were to, instead of spending the amount of money we're spending right now per year, $400,000, or if that went up to $600,000, instead of doing that year after year, were we to borrow $4 million in the next 18 months and do all the projects right away, we could potentially do it more cheaply than doing it, you know, more slowly over that period of time. That kind of financing, that's, DC, the DC Water Utility is now nationally known, nationally awarded for taking that approach with some of its stormwater issues. Similarly, DC, the DC government and their zoning code is doing basically a parallel to DC Water. DC Water raised, borrowed $40 million from philanthropy, as well as from, you know, basically a Wall Street investor kind of market. And so our need is smaller, but I really wonder if we could take an approach like that to try to, again, do, the goal is to do the work more rapidly, which is meets the legal requirement, but also do the work more cheaply, which is a benefit to residents collectively.
Interesting concept. And we'll definitely think around on that. I mean, one of the first issues that we would have to address is how to be able to manage a higher rate of production. You know, there'd clearly be staffing implications. We either have to bring on, you know, consulting engineers and project managers and, you know, basically, it's a challenge to keep up with the multiple projects that we are currently doing in the various avenues, be it sidewalk or street resurfacing or stormwater or playgrounds. So any faster production would necessitate staff, one way or another, consulting, you know, contractual staff or on-hand staff.
If you would just think about that, and I think that, just to respond in that suggestion, you know, that's where, if tree planting proved to be a viable thing, that's a pretty low-staff kind of activity. And if council changed policy so we could plant trees on private lands, you know, we open up a universe of places in places like Ward 6, where we could get a lot more trees out and do it at relatively low staffing costs that the base is building up. Or the large projects, the stream restorations and, you know, bigger bioretention, which are more costly, single projects might have a smaller staffing cost, even though the construction cost would be larger. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Braithwaite, I appreciate the presentation. Couple questions for you. Can you explain why the city doesn't charge a stormwater fee on its own property? Because that's been a question where Gaithersburg, Rockville charge a fee, and why don't we do it?
Well, I don't think we ever thought of it. It's a little bit snake eating its tail. If we were to charge ourself, we would have to generate those funds from tax revenue if I'm, and again, Suzy may want to speak to this, the only way we have money is taxes. So we'd have to tax residents who are already paying a stormwater fee to pay for our portion of a stormwater fee for ourselves. So I guess I just can't really understand the logic of charging ourselves a stormwater fee, given that we don't have a source for revenue that's not generated by our residents.
Is the purpose of the question just a documentation of kind of what, how much impervious surface that we have that we deal with, that we would then compare on some level?
I think the question is more, you know, Tacoma Park has always been a leader in stormwater, right? And I was surprised that, one, Rockville and Gaithersburg were charging themselves. I didn't know that was something, you know, municipalities did. And, you know, I wanted to know why that was something, since we've been such a leader on this, why weren't we doing it? I mean, was there some...
I wasn't even aware that Rockville and Gaithersburg were, and I'd like to find out a little bit more about what it is they charge for, because you could charge for facilities, which would be this building, Public Works. But are you charging for the roads? Are you charging for the sidewalks? Are you charging for our parking lots?
I think it's primarily their facilities.
And for a city like ours, that's a pretty tiny, relatively tiny piece of the impervious area, but we can certainly take a look at it. area, but we can certainly take a look at it.
Councilmember Smith, many times when, when governments charge themselves, it's to make different departments kind of bear their weight of activities. We're pretty small for those things, but that's where I've seen that more often. And, and we'll both follow up and see what makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding water testing, what happens if we find something wrong with the water, something in the water? What's the protocol? How do we handle it?
Yeah, we've had those situations, both just in our general water testing, we also worked with the Center for Watershed Protection to do a specific study continuation of work they were doing with Montgomery County on our Maple Avenue outfall, which is called Brashear's Run at Sligo and Maple. So basically what's done in those cases is you start it at a point and you take, you test the water, and if you find a high level of something, fecal coliform, nitrogen that indicates a sewage connection, you then keep moving up the system to see if the test still shows positive until you get to a point where you don't see it anymore. Then you identify that the source is coming somewhere between this manhole and that manhole. So you try to identify which pipe, which area that source is coming from, and then you work your way backward up the pipe till you ultimately find the source. In reality, it, it turns out to be more than a needle in a haystack. We have very good maps of our system, and so we have a better sense than most about where things are coming from, but to be able to actually track it turns out to be a difficulty. Sometimes it's because it's sporadic. If somebody's got a washing machine hooked up to a storm drain pipe illegally, you're not going to find that all the time. You just have to be there when they're discharging to identify, see the suds, walk your way up the pipe and find it, or a temperature change. So that's basically how you do a list of discharge. You test and you work your way back up the pipe and try to identify the source. In the, in the study that the Center for Watershed Protection did for us, there were three sources that they were trying to track down. Of the three, we were able to find one and get it corrected.
Only one?
And that, that was the WSSC. There was a sewer pipe intrusion right in Tacoma Piney Blanche Park, pretty extreme sewer pipe degradation, and so we pointed that out to them. They were already aware there was a sewer pipe issue, but they bumped it up on their level of priority that, that sewer repair was done. We tracked down two other, two other common, kind of chemical tracers, one to Tacoma Park Elementary School, one to the Park Ritchie apartment buildings, but were never able to get a clear enough reading or identify what they were. Our best level of assumption about the elementary school was it was the material they were using to clean the coils of their HVAC system. And whenever they did that and did the wash, then that would come down into the system. The roof drains, which is where it would be rinsed off to, were connected to the stormwater systems versus the sewer systems. So sometimes it's, it's areas like that. So we spent a bit of time talking with the schools. And, you know, in, in these cases, we were welcomed into the facilities. We didn't have issues where people told us they couldn't come in and we were, you know, not allowed to test, so the Park Ritchie folks were, opened up their laundry rooms, let our, let our inspectors go everywhere they could, and we just could never identify the source.
And if you were to rank the quality of our water, 10 is spring water.
Yeah, I don't know.
Where, where would you put us?
And you'll be quoted.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, because I don't have a broad enough understanding of water quality everywhere. I know in, in studies I've read in the past, our water quality is, is, you know, D or, D or D-plus level in terms of, in terms of particularly sewage. But we also know that WSSC has been doing quite a bit of sewer rehab work around our city, and I think that that will have an incredibly significant impact on, on some of the pollutants in our stormwater.
Okay. And finally, I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Mail when he talked about bringing in a third party to possibly help us with the financing. P3s were a, a big part of the National League of Cities Conference. I think, you know, I don't know if this would be a perfect P3, because there might not be enough money at stake, but I think it's a very interesting idea. And, you know, there's going to have to be ongoing maintenance for our systems. I think that's really something that we should consider. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Well, this is very interesting. I've learned a lot. Thank you. I have several questions, some of the, the, sort of the simple-minded questions to start with, which are probably have the obviously simple answers, but first of all, how do we, as, since you've been going to these workshops run by the Department of Environment, how do we compare with, with other municipalities? Or is it even fair to try to compare it? Because we're an urban area, and you've got a lot of municipalities that have septic systems. I mean, how do, do we-
I'd say we fare pretty well. There are jurisdictions like ourselves, Rockville, Gaithersburg, that have been very aggressive and working very hard on moving forward. There's a few others that are smaller jurisdictions and, and, you know, basically hadn't had the focus on this. I mean, one of the things we benefit from was the fact that we had a stormwater utility in place since the bin 90s, so we've been sort of owning our system since then. And so having a funding source, a dedicated funding source, also gives you avenues to do things that otherwise jurisdictions don't. So when Maryland changed the law in 2006 related to stormwater management, stormwater permitting, that really was kind of the, the start for a lot of jurisdictions in terms of, of their programs. So we're a bit ahead in that we started along, you know, a decade before that.
What, next question then is, they've set the goals and we have to meet them, but what, what's, what happens if you don't? I mean, is, is like, do you get sent to jail or something?
No, typically with EPA-related Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act, those types of, of federal rules, the penalty comes in development limitations, which may or may not affect us. Basically, you lose your ability to, you know, manage your, your zoning and development in the manner that the area would like to. You cease to be able to issue permits for construction because you failed to meet the requirements.
Now, you mentioned that the hospital was the big, the university followed by the hospital, but when you got a tract like JBG's ownership of the 10 acres at the corner of University in New Hampshire, isn't that all one owner? And there's, I mean, that's almost all roof and parking lot. Does, does that, is that one of the, one of the-
Which is the area University in?
University in New Hampshire where this little 7-Eleven is and where the Taco Bell's being built and the Post offices-
Yeah, the Walmart and that, yes, we do, we do-
Yeah, Walmart.
Oh, sorry, not the Walmart, Walgreens?
Walgreens.
Yeah, one of those. Yeah, we, we, we do bill each of the property owners relative to that. I'd have to look and see, I don't offhand know who's, who owns what.
When, 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 if, if we were to increase this fee as, as you're recommending, that's going to impact everybody, every property owner. Do you anticipate that there might be actions taken by property owners? For example, if I owned the piece of real estate at the Jiffy Lube on New Hampshire Avenue or the restaurant, I can't remember the next, the one that corner Sheridan, which is about 90% asphalt and, and never, and never gets used by automobiles, wouldn't there be some incentive inherent there for people to go out and start saying, shoot, we, we can afford to dig up some of this asphalt? And, and that's sort of an open-ended question, but as fees go up, you know, then, then other, other, other consequences, which might be positive, could accrue.
Yeah, well, we currently do not have a system in our utility fee and our, our rate structure for rebates or reductions in fee based on actions taken on private property. That's something that the city could look at, but for our purposes, it's always been a question of value for the dollar. But once you start getting your fees structured such that they start getting up there into, into dollars, the city may want to take a look at that. Obviously, it's going to be more impactful for private, or for commercial properties, large commercial properties than, than single-family properties. And, and there's also an understanding that now with the new laws relative to managing stormwater on-site, any redevelopment of a property has to meet the current level of standard, which is far more extreme than the past was. We don't charge them currently any less. So if somebody who fully renovates their building, they're now required, if they're disturbing, actually for, for residential property, if you're disturbing more than 5,000 square feet, for commercial property, any size construction project that's disturbing land is required to meet a higher level of stormwater management on-site for a certain level of storm. So that's implicit in their, in their construction costs. They have to do the dry wells, the bioretention facilities, the green roofs, that then adds to their construction costs. So they are now required to manage their stormwater on-site, and they didn't used to be.
But if I can interrupt, one of the things that's being proposed for the coming year is a recalculation, a reassessment of how much impervious surface there is-
Yes.
-by property. And I think that gives us a, once we get that, it gives us a lot of information about some options that we may want to consider. And yes, if somebody's redoing things, they have to meet the higher standard, but there may be some ways that we can have some incentives also just to, you know, if you don't, if, if all you're doing is taking out asphalt and putting in some nice rain gardens and things, you know, there's, there may be some ways to do some credits for that. There's a variety of options for that. The, the alternative question that has been raised to me is properties that add impervious surface that are within zoning, like on a private property, can we make them pay more than a standard residential rate? So I think there's some really interesting discussions that could be considered, some options that could be considered. I want the base information first, I think that will be useful. There certainly are options in different communities that they try. Whatever it is needs to be understandable and easily implementable, and that, that may be the trick.
Yeah, I, I think all those, with all the things you're talking about are, are easy to, to understand, and my point is, is that as these fees go up, all of a sudden, people start saying, well, at $55 or $48, like, well, who cares? It's, you know, it's a drop in the bucket. But after a while, it starts to get more. I know that in that regard, there's some homes in my ward where they pretty much paved over the entire front yard so they can park their, their work vans and things like that. And that's, that's a bit galling when you think about what we're trying to accomplish here. And I don't know if we can get down, or we even want to bother getting down to that, to that granular level, but it, but it's just something to, for us to think about. The, there, there was, getting down to some specifics, I was at Kirkland and Kennewick, which is one of the pictures you have here. It's my understanding that, that, that circle that collects, it's one of the early bioretention experiments in the city, hasn't worked as well as it was, and, and that was supposed to have some re-engineering done to it. There was, when the Fort, when Erskine Street sidewalk and its traffic calming was put in a bioretention basin, was supposed to be built, but you could not because from an engineering point of view, it had to be moved way downstream. And I, I don't see either of those in the list of projects.
Well, the Kirkland and Kennewick is a this-year project, so it'll be done before June of this year. So, yeah, the plans have just about been completed, and our on-call contractor will be doing that project. So, yeah, we're looking forward to getting that started in the spring. In terms of the Erskine stormwater treatment, it's still on the list of facilities that need to be designed.
But it's, it's not on that list, should it?
It's not on the list. It's relatively small, relative to, to the type of items that are on that list, but it, it is a project that is still yet to be done in terms of meeting the-
That's good enough. I mean, I, I just wanted you, wanted to know that it was something that you hadn't lost track of.
Yep.
And also with regard to the landscaping contractor, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm satisfied with what I see, because some of the bioretention basins that were installed back when the sidewalks were built in 2012 are doing marvelous. Other ones, half the vegetation has died, and I don't see anybody in, in the interim years planting anything in all of it, in those places. And I think that some of those need to be monitored so that, that the vegetation is, is restored.
Sure, sure. We have, our contractor comes out six times a year between March and November, and, and for the most part, we've been very happy with the work that, that we've done, but if you've got a particular site that you think needs, needs something, just shoot me an email, I'd be happy to follow up.
I will, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kova?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. You've talked about both trying to reduce runoff and trying to stop pollution, and I think they're sort of both part of it. Is one sort of more than, more important than the other, or are they sort of both aspects of what's at stake here?
My understanding, based on the new state NPDES permit, is for jurisdictions of our size, they're really considering capturing and filtering runoff, so basically treating runoff and as the way to receive those pollution reductions. So they're not going to assign us a total maximum daily load of how many tons of phosphorus, nitrogen, and other items that we have to show that we're reducing based on testing. They're going to use as their, their measuring rod that treatment acreage and assign that based on their formulas, a level of pollution reduction equivalent from that treatment. I don't know if that makes sense.
So in other words, the assumption is that if you stop X amount of water from flowing-
If you stop it and treat it, if you provide a place for it to go in one of these types of facilities, be it a sand filter or bioretention facility, or a Filterra or granulated carbon or all the different types of medium that we have in our treatment facilities, if you are capturing a certain amount of water and putting it through that treatment, you will get a certain level of pollution reduction.
That gets to what some of my colleagues mentioned about what happens with, with private landowners. So if they're doing things and they could be planting trees or, or rain gardens or various other kinds of steps like that, that actually stops some of the water from ever getting into the stream because it, it gets absorbed. That could in theory be part of it, but we're not exactly getting that in the calculations. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yeah, we're not counting that, we're not capturing that. We didn't have a base level to start with. We, we had, don't have a method for capturing a, a reduction based on actions taken by private property, with the exception of those private property constructions that had to get a stormwater permit. So if you were disturbing more than 5,000 sque, 5,000 square feet and you got a stormwater permit, you had a certain number of facilities that were approved and required, and you have to inspect those, you have to maintain those, and the city has to verify that those are functional.
So how complicated do you think it would be to, and I think maybe the city manager mentioned this as well, to give some sort of, we've talked about this a few times in the past, I think, to give some sort of incentive to people? And I think about, in my own house, and I, you know, I, we install a number of things, and I'm not asking for any money back from that now because it happened, but we used to, in heavy rains, have like white water down our front steps, and my neighbors were always coming over thinking that there was a, you know, a broken water main, and that doesn't happen anymore because of, because of all these things. So, yeah, I'm happy to contribute, but I wonder whether that, what would it take to kind of get that to somehow be part of this? Even if the state and the feds don't have it, we would want to incentivize that, it seems to me. So would we have to have a baseline of everybody's thing, or before, before someone paid for a contractor to do it, could they have it inspected and then get credit for it? What do you think?
Yeah, we think it would be the same way that we assign ourselves credit for a certain, a certain treatment facility that we create. Basically, you take a look at the drainage area, you identify the square footage of the drainage area, and the amount of runoff based on these calculations that are, you know, engineers' dreams. And then you put a treatment facility in that you can document captures X quantity of water at X amount of rate, and, and you- of water at X amount of rate, and, and you do the, the math for that. So it would basically be identifying the drainage area that the person is working with, and the treatment, treatment type that they're using, and, and using the same calculations to come up with a credit for that. In order to make a system like that work, you'd have to basically have a starting point, you'd have to, you know, come in and apply, you'd have to show us what your current situation is in terms of, here's my problem, here's my situation, here's what I'm going to do, and then we would have to document the drainage area, the current situation, and then inspect the facility afterwards.
It'd be very, it'd be very labor-intensive, I guess?
It would be labor-intensive, which isn't to say, you know, we do lots of labor-intensive things, doesn't by, in its nature, mean that it's not something worth doing. But it is something that, you know, one of the things that we've always said in the past is with our stormwater utility fee, we've been doing larger projects on public property as a way to gain the biggest bang for the buck with the funding. So, you know, it's, it becomes kind of comparing size and contrasting, you know, typically on a private property, there's only so much you can do of a relative small size.
I think it's worth thinking about partly because, should there be an increase, at least people feel like they have a way of moderating it, admittedly by laying out additional money, but then they're part of, part of the solution. But also, there's a regressive aspect to charging everybody the same thing. And, you know, you mentioned the lot sizes and the house sizes actually vary incredibly widely, and so, you know, I don't know how the median, the median's the median, I guess.
Well, and I think with our, our new evaluation, one of the things we've been looking at in other jurisdictions is they have sort of a tiered approach for single-family residences to try to get at that. Whether we would have more than two tiers, I don't think. We don't have that much distinction, but it, it may be something worth looking at. One of the other challenges is if we were to give refunds or rebates to people, we're talking about $55 a year, these facilities are generally upwards of several thousand dollars, whatever portion we would rebate, we would then not have access to that money to do the other projects that we're doing. So it's, again, a little bit of a situation where the rate would have to even go higher in order for us to provide rebates to certain individuals that could-
Because we don't get credit for that work, even though it does something.
Well, even if we were to take credit, it's still a function of, of having to have, having to have the revenue stream to do the work that we need to do.
Well, just one last question on the revenue stream. So looking at the, at the chart here, so it says for the current year is $507,000 is the total budget, and the proposed is $696,000, so that's a difference of $188,000, I think. But then you said there's $173,000 in surplus that could be used for this. So would it be a lot easier just for the next year to sort of say it's a wash and we don't have to increase it, and then see where we are the year after that, after we find a way to give homeowners credits and all these other things?
Well, I don't know that we're going to be able to do that in a year's time.
Well, I'm joking about that, but since the amounts are about the same, do we actually need to increase it this year? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, you know, that's really a council decision. We've been talking for the past few years about, yes, we all know we need to increase the stormwater fee, but we haven't really kind of bellied up to the bar to, to do it. And we may want to wait till after we've done the ERU evaluation in impervious area, you know, as, as a good time to do it. The fact of the matter is, the list of projects isn't going anywhere without funding, and our, our requirements aren't going anywhere. So, you know, it's sort of a, a little bit of a chicken and egg. You're going to have to, we're going to have to generate a certain amount of revenue to, to, to get these projects accomplished. Whether we wait a year just kind of pushes it out down at the other end. And I would really like to, I haven't really been able to find an analysis that looks at incentivizing private property projects and what that means in terms of the overall impact. You know, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, DC, both have, you know, all have, you know, good incentive programs in terms of rebates, but I don't know quite what they're getting in terms of credit related to those projects, and that's something we could dig a little deeper into.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Great. All right, it's getting late, so I won't repeat what my colleagues have said, but I would just like to underscore what Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Kovar just said. I get a, a lot of requests and emails from residents to, when we're looking at the stormwater, to look at the possibility of providing credits for rain gardens and pervy, particularly pervious driveways. I think they're, and this is just anecdotal information, but there are a number of people I know who have really put a lot of money into redoing their driveways lately, and I think it's more not necessarily looking to recoup money as much as a recognition and, you know, some money, but I, I don't, I think it's more this idea that they're doing the work and getting some kind of credit, so I would just, for some folks. So I would say that. And in addition, I'm trying to figure out, I understand the need to move forward on these projects and to have the money, but what I'm struggling with is, would it be better to have, to reevaluate the ERU to have a better understanding before we change the stormwater fee? So that's the only thing I'm kind of thinking about right now in terms of, you know, which comes first?
Right, and, and so that's part of the reason when I've been meeting with councilmembers to work on budget, I've been asking some questions about that. I think, you know, I'll be making some recommendations about that in the upcoming budget. There have been some interest in doing some phasing in, not just going, you know, to the full amount right away. And I think I do want to keep some fund balance, but it doesn't need to be $173,000. And so just, you know, working with that and coming up with something, and then, once we get the ERU information, maybe finalizing that, you know, because that's what, year may be the better way to go.
Great. Terrific. All right. I think that's it. I didn't imagine we were going to spend that much time on stormwater tonight, but thank you very much. It was a very thorough presentation, and-
May I make one suggestion? That we consider hiring my colleague who's no, who's out of work and has some, just asked some very brilliant questions here. I think he could help, help our staff enormously.
All right. Great.
No doubt.
That's it, we're adjourned.